Good evening, everyone. Tonight is October 26, 2022. It is now 7:09 PM, and I will call to order the City of Columbus regular City Council meeting. Our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me if you care to.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would someone make a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
So this is Janet. I move to approve consent agendas number four through six.
It's Rob. I'll second.
Is there any other questions or discussions? I'll call for the roll.
Shelley, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
Jessie, aye. Number seven, public open forum. Is there anyone here who would like to speak at the public open forum?
I do. This is Jennifer Letts. I'm on line with Zoom.
All right. Go ahead, please.
I have three issues I want to bring forth. Two are proposals. Well, three are proposals. One, I was proposing an amendment to the swimming pool ordinance to remove the need for a fence if the side walls are 52 inches high and if there is either a locked ladder where the steps are covered or remove the ladder entirely to restrict entry.
Mr. Mayor and council members, that has been brought up. It's on a list. We have a fair amount of ordinance we're working on, and unfortunately, it's -- you didn't mean there's about five or six ordinances ahead of that.
So it's on the list. It will be taken care of, and spring is right around the corner.
Well, we did talk about that briefly, though, right? Because if I recall, in past meetings.
So.
Because I kind of remember reflecting back on my certain situation as well.
We did. We already changed it once with a pool -- you know, allowing a pool cover in addition to a fence.
Yeah.
And then we talked about amending it, perhaps, the height of the fence because it's five feet. Right now, it's five feet, and whether or not that was appropriate or not. Again, there were so many ordinances that we've been working on that's ahead of that. There just is not enough time to go back to that one before we finish. We have at least six ordinances that are in the works right now.
Okay. Sorry.
It's on the list. It's not forgotten.
And have you more, Jennifer?
I do. I was going to propose that the council change their policy to allow for public comment on each topic on the agenda. While public open forum is appropriate for new issues, the public has a right to comment within the context of conversation and to potentially correct misinformation presented to the council before a vote occurs. The current policy stumbles the public out of conversations on topics, and it's harmful to public interest.
Mr. Mayor and council, the various statutes in our ordinance prescribe when there's a public hearing for certain matters. The proposal would essentially create a public hearing for each agenda item. So, you know, that's something you can consider, but it's not generally recommended because that essentially changes the requirement for public hearings on matters. The original purpose of public comment is for those items that are not on the agenda to allow them to be brought forward by the public directly to the council and then to be referred to staff for additional action and report back to the council. Certainly, it's something you can consider, but it would, in essence, create a public hearing for each item on the agenda.
Thank you. And anything else, Jennifer?
After Bill's comment at the last meeting, I realized that the whole council and the public may not be privy to all that's happened and maybe making decisions based on parcel or misinformation. In our particular circumstance, when we moved here, we learned that we had a driveway with our easement and thought to understand what that meant. We were -- I spoke with Jessica and worked with her many times, and was told that we couldn't do anything to our driveway, put down gravel without a driveway maintenance agreement. And then I'd have to pay Bill $1,500 to draft an agreement, the terms of which we would have no idea until it's done, or we could face repercussions if we did anything to our driveway. In disbelief, I asked if Jessica put in writing, and she did. The restrictions brought us to seeking the deviation of the 560-foot easement that ran in our driveway, and I saw the neighbors sign it, but my position was declined. This is just a little history. During those discussions, Elizabeth presented the notion to the council that the easement went much longer than it did based on city minutes. So Bill asserts that the turnaround that we were talking about last meeting has already cost the city several thousands of dollars in lots of time. I want you to know or want to consider that Elizabeth led the council in $1,000 in attorney's fees for title work because she refused to believe the legal deeds, which clearly just stated 560 feet. Well, that's one tiny nugget of the puzzle that I'm talking about. We had to hire an attorney to prove what was obvious, that a resident had no legal duty to enter into a driveway maintenance agreement to maintain their driveway, and then the 560 feet was as true as the deed it was written on. We, again, incurred a substantial monetary loss due to the city's pursuit. During the course of the attorney's legal reviews, we discovered for itself 55 hammerhead easement was never due to the city and was erroneously constructed on private property. In addition, there was an easement already reserved for the turnaround, part of the hanky addition, but it was different parcels entirely and never developed. So we formally vacated that easement to request the removal thereby cracking the chain of title, which was something we were in our right to do. After that, there was a needing to construct a turnaround, and much discussion took place. We'd offered to sell the city property to accomplish turnaround that met the requirements of their own ordinance, which would allow us to recoup some of our attorney's fees that were expended due to correcting the facts of not needing a driveway maintenance agreement and that the easement in our driveway only went 560 feet like the deed said. We even offered to trade, reducing the 560-foot easement in exchange for land necessary due to turnaround. Neither of those proposals were acceptable to the council, and they refused to utilize the existing turnaround easement due to the infringement it would have on those owners' lot, which we understand. The city then wanted to conduct private meetings. We met with Jessica, Jessie, and I'm sorry, Janet, Jessie, and Elizabeth, and we're met with hostility, accusations, threats, and retaliation because we declined to donate our land. I forecasted the very issue we have now and did a legwork last year to determine that the minimum fire trucks and buses need to be able to turn around. I spoke with the fire chief and the safety director at the bus garage. 90 feet was the minimum. I communicated that to the city. Instead, Mr. Bittner reported in the February 23, 2022, meeting that the 80-foot diameter turnaround he proposed would meet the needs of all vehicles. The current turnaround is far less than that. It's made within the 66-foot easement right away, which means probably less than 60 feet, and it does not accommodate all vehicles. In fact, today, the city's own crew had to back up all the way from Vauxhall, which is nearly half a mile, with their equipment because there's no way to be able to turn around. It was truly a sight. We had dump truck and a truck with a trailer and a bobcat backing down over half a mile at 90-degree angles. I've made efforts to reestablish a bus stop at the end of 182nd. The bus garage is determined as insufficient and unsafe for a bus to turn around in the tiny freezing hammerhead or the newly constructed turnaround. When I reviewed their transportation policy, it stated that a pupil in grades K through 11 may be expected to walk a distance not to exceed 3/10 of a mile. In the last meeting, when it was voted on, Bill asserted that the distance for my children to walk to Vauxhall is within the school buses' standards of within 3/10 of a mile. Last I checked, my children don't drop from the sky at the end of my driveway. They have to walk 2,270 feet from my house to Vauxhall. That's nearly half a mile for my elementary school student. I can circulate the county's GIF map measurement tool if you don't believe my word is fact. So the city council's got allowing the bus garage to return the transportation policy and not complying with the ordinance to construct turnaround to allow the buses. I reassert the public has a reasonable expectation that the City of Columbus is going to comply with its own code for ordinances and construct turnarounds at the end of roadways in a manner which can be used in turnaround, including school buses, emergency vehicles, as well as trucks and trailer combos. The city has duty, along with the financial duty, to construct proper travel roadways. The burden is not on residents to donate land to do it. The hanky development developer reserve to turnaround may have even put money down to reserve to do it. I don't feel like the city can simply just throw up its hand and say that because we would not cooperate with their desire for us to donate land and they cannot construct a proper roadway. There's something that can be done, and I just feel like we're getting nowhere with it. So I guess I'm just representing the discussion that people aren't able to turn around. People are actually running off the roadway. So I'm looking for that to be readdressed.
Thank you for your input, Jennifer. Bill, would you care to address it tonight, or shall we wait till another meeting?
Mr. Mayor and council, based on past council direction, unless you change that direction, what I understood is that this matter is closed, that the turnaround that was constructed is what's going to be constructed, and that the council is moving on from that point. So unless there is a change of heart or this evidence that's been -- this testimony that's been presented changes that direction, I don't know what we would bring back.
Thank you. Anything else, Jennifer?
If any of the council members are on the fence load, I urge you to come down and try to turn around.
Anyone else on public open forum? Hearing none, we'll move on to number eight. Resolution 22XX. The Columbus Parent Teacher Organization requests for a gambling premise approval, pages A1 through A6.
Mr. Mayor and council members, the city was approached by the Columbus Parent Teacher Organization as they would like to hold their turkey bingo this year. It has been on hold, my understanding, the last two years, and so they are happy to say that they are going to hold their turkey bingo this year. In order to do that, we have to pass a resolution indicating that we agree with the premise on which the action is going to take, or in this case, it's the gambling activity. And so you have a resolution before you to allow excluded bingo, and we do have to cross out "and raffles" on the heading, on November 18 at the elementary school at the address at 17345 Notre Dame Street. So again, we are approving the premise on which the gambling activity can take place. We are not approving the gambling activity that is for the Minnesota Gambling Control Board to approve.
Everyone understand?
Yep.
Turkey bingo, come out.
Yep.
All right. So I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 22.
29.
2229, authorizing the Columbus Parent Teacher Organization, CPTO, to conduct excluded bingo at the premise located at 17345 Notre Dame Street. Is there a second?
It's Rob. I'll second.
So it's moved and seconded. Any other questions, anybody? I have a question. So they play bingo, and then you win a turkey?
Yeah.
I think it's just because it's around Thanksgiving time. It's a fundraiser.
No, you do win a turkey.
Oh, is it? Really?
Instead of money.
It's pretty fun.
You get turkey.
My bad.
All right. Anybody else? I'll call for the vote.
Shelley, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Jessie, aye. Number nine, no. Planning Commission report. It was a joint meeting. Parkland dedication, number 10, pages one through three.
That would be me. Good evening, everybody. I am here today to -- can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
I am here to present you with a memo regarding updating the Parkland dedication fee schedule. We did receive direction from you to review it, and the results of that are here in this memo. As you can see, Columbus's fee schedule is significantly lower than some of the other comparable Minnesota cities in the area. My area memo doesn't have a specific recommendation for you all because part of the question here is what you want this money to accomplish, whether you would like for it to be a flat amount or a percentage. The plan here is that we'll discuss this, and then I will return to you with a memo with some specific recommendations. Before we start the discussion, I believe Bill does have some information to share, and then I believe Elizabeth has a list of questions to ask as well.
Mr. Mayor and council, it's certainly appropriate to look at your park dedication, particularly since it's significantly lower than surrounding communities. Based upon a number of national and local legal precedents, the question that you need to answer before you can change your fees is what is the demand that's on the parks that's created by development in your town? So in other words, when you have, you know, Thernbeck Farms developing, when you have other sites developing, what is the expectation that the developer will either provide parkland within the development, or as has been the case in Columbus mainly, that we develop city parks? And so it's a larger question, and there's actually a case that's pending at the Supreme Court with the city of Burnsville, where they didn't go through -- you know, a city as large as Burnsville didn't go through the steps of trying to answer the question, what is the demand created by new development and subdivisions? One of the things we did years ago in another community is we started by -- with an inquiry at the Met Council saying, what kind of guidance do you give cities in your park planning for what's a reasonable amount to set aside per house, per subdivision, per acre of development? And we got good guidance in that vein. But then it would be a question of, okay, now you know what the demand is per household for parkland. How is that expressed in our plans for the parks? And so I wish that it was as easy as surveying surrounding neighbors, cities. That's a good starting point to say, hey, we're well below. We're kind of a bargain. But then you have to go into this analysis of what is the true demand for a semi-rural, semi-urban community that's developing, and then we have to equate that to either a park dedication that occurs, you know, within a subdivision, that's land, or a fee in lieu, which is more typical. So I think this is a really good start, and I think it's a great question. It's one that's been raised a number of times over the years because of our low park fees. But we have to, because of these legal parameters and certainly with this case pending at the Supreme Court, cities are taking a closer look at how they get to that answer. We've got a few more steps to cover before we can say, okay, here's the right number, and here's how land converts to fees. So not desiring to make it too complicated, but there's a little bit of complication because these questions are tested.
So what's the next step for us, Bill?
Mr. Mayor and council, we can work with the Planning Office to help direct them to resources at the Met Council and elsewhere. We can come back with a range of, here's what the typical guidance is for land per household set aside for parks and trails. Then we would look for your direction within that band of guidance, where do we want to land? And then we would have to do some math in terms of the value of land in our community, how that equates to fees. So I think the primary direction would be to staff and the Attorney's Office to come up with that little bit of a study. Again, when we did this in another community, it wasn't -- it was a three or four-page memo. It wasn't, you know, it wasn't like doing a comprehensive plan. So hopefully, we can keep it that simple. But I think if we do that work upfront, then our fees are going to be defensible, though certainly, I'm sure, be reasonable and certainly more reasonable than some of the communities that surround us. But that would be the suggested direction, is that the Attorney's Office work with the Planning Office to get that data compiled, and most of the work will be done by your in-house team. So we'll just review it. I don't see a lot of legal time in that.
And for Mr. Mayor and council members, there's two more direction questions that I had. Mine is for whether or not we're circulating this through groups or whether it's just coming before the council. So my question to you is, when we come up with this memo, are we to go to the park board, then the Planning Commission and council? Are we just coming back to the council with a recommendation, and you'll make the final conclusion on this? And our goal was, we wanted to put the fees into the fee schedule, you know, for January 1st. So that's why we're starting so early, you know, in big picture, in order to get the numbers into the fee schedule. So that's my first question. My second question is, and this is for staff, are we looking at a three-tiered system? In other words, do you want a Parkland dedication fee for the commercial district, a Parkland dedication for the residential district, and then a Parkland dedication for what I call the mixed-use district, which -- Bill, would it -- I know we talked about multifamily, so is it more the mixed-use district, or do you actually say apartments?
It would be the mixed-use district, because I believe that's the only one that would allow multifamily apartments. But typically, it converts from a per-area fee to a per-unit fee. So, you know, one of the things is, the apartment project is only paying $762, whereas in most cities, they'd be paying per unit. And we didn't have that issue, you know, prior to some of the development that's occurred.
This is Shelley. I also had a question about splitting land and if you're going to have the three-tier deal. I would hope that we would talk about people who want to split off a piece of their property for, like, we had a guy that came in here like two and a half years ago that wanted to split off a piece for a relative, and then we were charging him all the PUD things and the park fees. And I thought at the time that it was really kind of honorous for him to pay that park fee because he was just selling, you know, one piece of property. And we've talked about this in the past about whether it's, you know, the cutoff is, you know, splitting it into three or four, whatever, because we have larger, you know, plots of land. So I'd like that under consideration.
So this is Janet. Actually, that was one of my notes, too. The other thing I wanted to bring up, and maybe Bill isn't aware of this, but we're starting on a Parkmaster Plan project with the park board. And although the goals of that are a little bit different, we did connect with the Met Council. They hooked us up with some resources to be able to do that very economically. So I don't know if this is something we want to kind of tie into that process as well. But, you know, we've met with Frank, and Frank is going to be leading that charge with the park board. So I'm just thinking the timing is good to decide whether or not you want to kind of tag on to that.
Mr. Mayor and council, that would be exactly the right way to do it, is it would flow from a Parks Master Plan. You would decide how much investment you want in the existing park, whether you have a plan for parks within subdivisions, and then that would kind of funnel down into, okay, this is the demand that's created for fees and land. The problem with that is then we're probably waiting a whole nother cycle because we set the fees once a year.
Right.
So we're probably continuing with our existing fee schedule for another year while that plan works its way through.
And if that's the direction, then we'll stop here, and we won't pursue the memo until after the Parkmaster Plan is complete.
This is Rob. You'd kind of talked about the status of things and how it would go, right, whether we include the park board, the Planning Commission and things. I would hope that we could at least, at a minimum, include the park board, I think, because they know their budget best, and I think we're just approving things that the park board do, whether it's, you know, paving for the trails or the tennis courts need to be resurfaced or whatever. So hopefully, they can take a peek at it first and then come with a recommendation to us for us to talk over.
Yeah, and I think that's why I'd advocate doing it as part of the -- or tying it into the Parkmaster Plan because that whole project's being driven by the park board.
Okay.
Yep.
Mr. Mayor and council, one suggestion I can make as an interim would be that we do just a simple clarification on our fee schedule, that rather than per lot, it's per lot or unit. So it would give us discretion when we have something that is not, you know, it's on one lot but multiple units. We could now charge at least the low fee that we -- the low-low fee that we have today could be charged per unit and not on a single lot. That could be implemented in the fee schedule, if that's your direction.
Yep. I agree with that. Yep, I do, too. Need a motion?
That would take a motion.
So that, just so I'm clear, that would be on a per-unit basis. So in the event another apartment building would, we would get, at a minimum, the 1525 per unit.
Correct. And also, if someone came in with a townhome development where the lots, they didn't do individual lots, they did a planned unit development without individual lots, maybe that wouldn't happen. It would just make sure that we don't have this gap where someone can propose hundreds of units and be charged, you know, $762.
Right.
I think it's 76250, right?
It's a two-tiered program. So if you have a commercial lot, it's 76250. If it's a residential lot, then it's $1,525.
Right.
So in this particular case where the apartments are, right now, if you were to add the unit, it still would be 76250 per unit. To address Shelley's issue, though, it is on, right now, that would equate per unit. So every new lot would be included.
So then, if somebody wants to split their land in half, you would charge $3,050?
$1,525 if it was in the residential district.
So it's only the lot you split off, not the?
Correct. It's the new lot.
It's the new created lot.
And that is extremely low compared to just about anywhere else. And you cannot create an exception for a two-lot subdivision that, you know, there's no basis to, you know, say that they shouldn't be charged for the park and everybody else should. It just, it has to be uniform for all applicants.
But what we're talking about is that Thernbeck, which is added how many houses, you know, and then you split a lot, have your son live next door or whatever, you are charging the 1,500. I was upset about the 3,000, but, you know, 1,500 I can see.
So, Mr. Mayor and council, if it makes sense to clarify, and it would just be in the fee schedule, that lot and/or unit, that would give us the discretion to charge per unit?
So this is Janet. I would move to direct staff to amend the fee schedule for the 2023 year to include the language that the fee would be applied on a per-lot or per-unit basis.
This is Shelley. I'll second it.
Are there any other questions or comments? I'll call for the vote.
Shelley, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Jessie, aye.
Hi, thanks, everybody.
Anything else, Ella?
No, I don't really have anything else. Just wanted to say that, yeah, ours is significantly lower. So it'll be interesting to see that updated. But yeah, email, you can feel free to email me or stop me if you have any questions or comments about this, too.
Thank you. So we're on to number 11, discussing the residential zone business moratorium. Carryover from our other meeting. Jessica, why don't you come back to the front table, please? And we'll continue.
I think it's best to just jump right back in where we were. Yeah? So we were on, I don't know what the slide number is, but traffic is the heading of the slide. 11. 11. Thank you.
Jessica, just before we start, just one question for the council. Are we, in looking at big picture, are we going to set a time limit for discussion? There's a lot to go through, and I know that, I don't know what audience in particular is waiting for, but just wanted to make sure. Are we going to set a time saying that we're going to talk about this for 45 minutes, a half hour, an hour? It doesn't matter to me, but we know we're not going to finish tonight, and then we'll end up creating either a workshop or a special meeting to further discuss this amongst the council. So just offering a suggestion that we set a timeframe and then move on to the other business of the agenda.
Why don't we go till 8:15, which will give us 35 minutes?
Sounds great to me. We had an early start today, so I know everyone's been sitting for a while. We were talking about traffic and specifically how to We were talking about traffic, and specifically how to regulate traffic for a home occupation two. And traffic is something that inherently is difficult to be invisible. It spills out onto the streets, right? So inherently, what, traffic will impact a greater space than the property itself. So, in discussion at the earlier meeting, I believe there was interest in regulating the trips to and from the property based on the road type that the property is on, which is something we can certainly explore. My recommendation would be to break it up based on whether they're on a gravel road, a county road, or a paved city road. And in my opinion, the county road would have the largest number of trips allowed, followed then by the paved road, and then gravel road would have the least number of trips allowed to and from the property. Right now, the recommendation is eight trips per day to and from the property. And I believe, I remember, some council members expressing interest perhaps in a 16 trips per day number. So if, for the sake of discussion, I would start off with saying a county road would have 16 trips to and from per day, city paved road have eight trips to and from, and gravel road, maybe six. As a discussion point to start. Other ways that we could look at categorizing properties for traffic is acreage. We could also look at, an idea that I wrote down was the distance from the dwelling or accessory building to the property line. But I'm not sure if that has any impact on the distance once the traffic is on the road. So it could be something like the distance from the driveway to property lines. Just a couple more ideas for providing categories to implement some type of traffic control So maybe the first question is, do we want to categorize by roads, road type?
Well, I think it makes sense to categorize by road type, but thinking your first category, which was the county road, I don't know how you measure that. I mean, there's so much traffic, I don't know. So, I mean, we could put a number on it, but how do you even measure that?
Measure what?
How much traffic is going into a home business from a county road.
Mr. Mayor and Council, if I can interject, if you had an enforcement issue, what you would do is you'd just have a simple study where someone would count trips in and out of the property. So that's typically how, when you're doing a traffic study for a commercial use, you just have someone with a clicker counting trips in and out of that particular property. And it would probably only come up in an enforcement case.
And that would be like a nuisance where somebody made a complaint?
Correct. Somebody makes a complaint, we want to send somebody out there, and they observe on a couple different days for a couple different hours, and see how many trips are going in and out. It's relatively easy to do. Either you can hire someone, you know, Kevin's team does that all the time, or you could just send staff out, enforcement staff. The one thing I was going to comment, and I believe we have in our comprehensive plan, arterial roadways are listed. So that might be the nomenclature we would use, is arterial roadways versus residential streets.
Could we have a quick lesson on what an arterial roadway is? Is that another way of saying county road?
Well, yes, but some, some city roads would be considered arterial as well, and they're usually, Kevin would be the one to answer the question, but, go ahead, Kevin.
Yeah, I mean, there's criteria that MINDOT has established in terms of classifying roadways, and there are maps that would indicate, you know, if we would want to follow that type of criteria. So, off the top of my head, I can't tell you which ones are arterials and which ones aren't in terms of our local roadways, but that is a criteria that could be used, so.
Many cities do use that term. I just was never sure what it meant exactly, so.
Well, and we just had the speed study where there were some other terms tossed in there, like connector roads and things like that. So we should probably decide what the criteria are. When I think about a county road, and some of the discussions that we've had, when we've had complaints about county roads, and Inoka County coming back and saying, you know, they're designed for, I don't remember, 70,000 vehicles a day, sitting here trying to put numbers like 16 per day seems kind of crazy on roads that that's what they're designed to carry. And if they're already carrying 40,000 or 50,000, again, 15 or 16, is that really going to make an impact? I mean, that, I think that's just something to consider. I definitely think it makes sense on gravel roads and in smaller, or not communities, neighborhoods. But, I don't know, you can, I don't remember the numbers off the top of my head, I just remember they were very large.
Well, and I think, I don't know, that the number, you know, 16 or 20 really matters. And the road, I think, doesn't really matter as much as the driveway. So if you have, even the people that are on the county road, but their houses are set back, and they're right next to each other, and they're, somebody's going down their driveway 20 times a day, their neighbor might be, you know, they might think that's a nuisance.
That would be my concern as well. It's, with the gravel roads and the city roads, the concern could be the impact on the road itself. On a county road, however, with the amount of traffic that goes on it every day, I think that from our perspective, the concern is more where we have driveways near each other or a driveway that's near a home, and that neighbor is dealing with the, the impact of cars coming and going frequently on the driveway. So, a way to handle that could be, you know, there's no limit on the number of trips per day if you're on a county road or an arterial roadway, unless your driveway is at less than 100 feet from the property line, in which case, there's a maximum of 16 trips. Something like that.
Well, and I think we talked before about being invisible, and it would be different if somebody lives on an 80-acre piece, and it's 40 acres between them and their neighbor. Doesn't matter how many times somebody goes down the road.
And so maybe it's not the distance between the driveway and the property line, but it's the distance from the access point to a neighboring dwelling. Because some homes are near the property line, some homes are set back very far. So you could say that there's no limit on the number of trips to and from if you're on an arterial roadway, unless the distance from your access point to a neighboring dwelling is less than X number of feet, in which case, there is a maximum of Y number of trips per day. Could be a way to handle your concerns.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
As far as the use of the road, if people are going to get an IUP, and then they are going to be taxed at a higher rate, isn't that part of what the higher rate is for?
I think the tax applies to the building itself, right?
Right, but they're paying more for commercial use. And so, you know, they're not paying just the residential use. So I would assume that that's what, as a matter of fact, that's why I thought we were doing this, was that these people are using the road more than others. And so, to me, it's, okay, well, they've paid their extra now.
So there shouldn't be a limit on the number of trips?
I don't, I don't like the number of trips, but I understand that we have to put some kind of limits on it. And then, when you talk about the last parameters, it seems like an awful lot of calculation to do.
Yeah, I understand your point about them paying taxes, but I don't think if, because they're paying more taxes, then they have the ability to have more impact on their neighbors.
No, I'm saying that she was talking about the use of the road, and I don't think that that should come into it, because they're paying for more use of the road.
Yep.
I still believe in the, you know, invisibility thing, but.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor and Council, and I just go back to, you know, I think there is a big difference between arterial roads and residential roads. We had John's Black Dirt that we struggled with for years, and you've heard the tales of woe. And had we had some tighter limitations on that permit, you know, we might have saved a lot of heartache for the neighbors. So, I really, I like where this is going from an enforcement standpoint, to have classification of roads, to have specific numbers, and maybe an exception where there's no number because, you know, you're so far away from your neighbors and you're on an arterial. But you're going, you're going in a good direction. I just want to, you know, kind of underscore that, because we've lived through some of these cases where we didn't have that kind of limitation.
You know, I really don't like using John's Black Dirt as an example, because John's Black Dirt morphed from a company that started, and they had like one to two deliveries a day, and then they were bought out, or they were, their business went to another business, and then all of a sudden, it was multiple, and it morphed. Well, in the IUP situation, that wouldn't happen, because they had applied for a particular use and that there was going to be, you know, I don't think that that would have saved us in John's Black Dirt, because like I said, it morphed. And we are supposed to be on top of this with the IUP now, so.
It's exactly what happens in IUPs that don't have clear standards. It's exactly what happens. They become bigger and different than what they started as. That's just my experience.
It's what, it has happened in the city as well with, you know, even businesses that haven't gotten permits. They get bigger and bigger because there haven't been rules set. They don't know that they need a permit or don't want to get a permit, and then they become so big, they can't fit in with the rules that were currently in place, and we kind of became stuck.
Okay, but in the application, in the application for the permit, you're asking, you know, several questions. We're getting to that point. And one of the questions is, you know, how many, you know, do you expect a day? And in the case of John's Black Dirt, they would come in and they would say, I have one to two a day, and that's what it would be. And then, there is a complaint filed, and they say, well, there's six or seven, you know, a day. Okay, then they need to apply for a change to the IUP, right? So what I'm saying is, is that we didn't have that in place for John's Black Dirt. But if we have this in place, and we say, you have to say, this is how I'm going to start my business, and then we say, based on that, yes, you can have your business here, then what's the problem? Because if they deviate from that, then you can go after them.
Yeah, and perhaps that isn't a good example, since it's a 40-year, you know, it was a 40-year use. The examples that brought us to this discussion are the ones that are hard to enforce because they don't have standards, and we have neighbor complaints saying, how are you going to get them back into compliance? And it's very difficult, as we know, because we're going through at least one of those right now, and maybe more, Jessica knows, that it's difficult to say in court that, oh, they don't meet the standards, when the standards weren't established from the get-go. So that's, that's why we keep, we keep coming back to that. And so that's why I think, rather than debating the, you know, the direction, I think we need to keep working on what the standards are that you're all comfortable with. Unless three or more of you want to head in a different, in a different direction.
Well, I like the suggestion you made, Jessica, so maybe we can move on to gravel or city road.
Yeah, so, well, for arterial, if there is, if there is an access point that's less than 100 feet, and I'm doing 100 feet for it for right now, between a dwelling and the access point, what kind of limit per day would be reasonable? I put 16. It's a number that's been thrown out before.
So 16 is like two an hour? For a normal workday?
On average.
And a typical residential home generates 10 trips per day.
Really? That's a lot.
Yeah. Well, it's a single-family home that might, you know, have kids and go into the ballgames and all that. So that's, that's what the IT trip manual is. It's a standard that's pretty reliable. And when you get to the empty nesters, it's half of that.
Yeah, I guess I could relate to that, whether it's sports, whether it's, you know, the bus is canceled again for the 10th time this year, you know?
So maybe 16 is too low, based on that. Maybe you want to do like 20 or something, 25.
We could, yeah, we could double it to 20, and then for a paved road, go 10, and then a gravel road, eight.
I mean, I agree that that is probably a good number, but still, it should, it should be a factor of how many, or how far, how big of a property it is and how far they are from their neighbors. I mean, there's gravel roads that have big lots, too, that, you know, doesn't really matter how many, wouldn't, wouldn't impact their neighbors if 20 came down a gravel road.
Okay, so we have an idea to put the additional control measure of looking at the distance from the access point to the dwelling to further limit the number of trips. Is that something that the rest of the council would be interested in doing for paved roads and gravel roads?
Well, I think for the, I think for at least the gravel roads especially, the more, the more trips that are made on them, the harder they are to maintain. You can weigh in here, I mean, I'm assuming you're getting more of the washboard effect, the more trips. So in addition to the nuisance factor, you've also got wear and tear on the roads. So I'm okay with, like, on a gravel road, taking both of those things into consideration.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's a good point, because then they're going to have to grade more, right?
So maybe eight is a good number to start with for gravel roads.
What number?
Eight.
Okay, it says maximum of eight trips per day to and from property by all vehicles associated with it. So that means if you have some employees, there's, let's say, two. Then you have four trips, or, I don't know, maybe it's two trips, I don't know, is it two per day, you know, like, to and from? I just don't know. I mean, then you have to subtract that from the vehicles that are going to go in for whatever service or whatever they're doing.
But we still want to have a minimum for people that are more than 100 feet distance between the dwelling and the access point, because it's a gravel road, and we're concerned about wear and tear on it.
Yes.
Right? So we could start with eight. Unless we want to start higher. We could start with eight. And then if you are within 100 feet access point to dwelling, drop it down to six.
Mr. Mayor and Council, why don't we put this in a draft for you? Because it's going to come back. And we may even have some creative ideas on flexibility, like we did on the issue of, I'm already forgetting, the number of employees, where there's criteria. So we're hearing some of your concerns in building in some flexibility. You know, the council can consider greater numbers under these circumstances, larger lots, existing screening, you know, available parking, the things that we discussed before. It might be that that flexibility device applies to more than one standard. So let us think a little bit creatively on how that would work.
Can I ask that it not be done in a vacuum, that we take some of the existing businesses and apply it to it?
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's actually a very good way to measure if it's workable.
Okay.
I agree with that.
It's more work, but, you know, to have it apply in circumstances where people are already using their properties in that way is, makes a lot of sense.
So your idea is to maybe just ask a few existing businesses to see how much traffic they're generating on a daily basis?
Yeah, I would say so. Get their, how many cars are coming or going?
Okay.
I feel like some gravel roads are going to be more than that. You think like an auto shop that might be on there, someone's dropping off, picking up, but it's, I guess we ask their opinion, right?
Can do. The next two bullet points have to do with deliveries. These were two bullet points that we struck from home occupation. One, for home occupation two, I think there is a greater concern that there could be a larger number of deliveries coming and going. So right now, the recommendation is to limit deliveries of a non-residential nature to Monday through Friday, allowing them Monday through Friday. And then, again, we have the same one delivery per week by a 20,000 GVW vehicle. And this, in my mind, this does not include And this, in my mind, this does not include, the deliveries would not apply to the trips per day number. That's why it has been written "to and from the property by all vehicles associated with the home occupation two." So, deliveries are not a part of the equation when it comes to trips per day.
So, I was just thinking about when we crossed off the two on home occupation one, but we, we did that because we thought we were covered in that first bullet, because there really shouldn't be any traffic that's not normally expected in a residential area. But, we don't have that here. So, I guess I, I'm comfortable with leaving that in.
I mean, the question is whether you think it's fair to allow somebody running a home occupation two to generate traffic that's not normally expected in a residential district in the case of larger vehicles, essentially.
So, one of, I was conferring with Jim during our break about what really constitutes a larger vehicle, and I'll let you speak to this, but you had a whole list of things and 20,000 was not a large vehicle, in his opinion. So, we might want to rethink that.
I, I, earlier when we said that it would include semi trucks, it would include semi trucks, but it would also cover smaller things like box trucks.
But, he was saying even a pickup, big pickup truck.
So, a semi truck is about 80,000 pounds. So, I, I mean, fully loaded, right? They, they could obviously be less than that, but they can be as much as that. 20,000 pounds is a very small box truck.
Does gross vehicle weight equate to pounds? I mean, is that...
GWR, that's the maximum weight that that vehicle can be. And they have a sticker inside the door that says that that's what it is and they can't be any more than that.
So, like on our road signs on Cattle River, or not Cattle River, Howard is like 26, is that what you said was the?
26,000.
26,000? But, you were saying one of the big pickup trucks is like 17, right? So, 20 is not very big. I'm just want to make sure we're talking, we're being realistic about the limits we're putting here.
I think 26,000, I mean, that's a number that we use in other instances in the city. It could be a fair thing to pick from other, other regulations that we have.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I, I think you start with what, what you're trying to eliminate. You don't want semi trucks rolling down residential streets on a regular basis. You don't want, you know, overly large trucks doing the same. There, there are standards that, I think to Jessica's point, there are standards that we can point to. I almost feel like you need a picture graphic, I just did that on my phone, but you almost need a picture graphic about weights and say, "Oh yeah, that's, that's the one that is too big," you know? And, and go from there. I don't know if that's a helpful suggestion or not, but...
I think that the feeling I'm getting from the council is we probably don't want to limit pickup trucks, box trucks. I'm wondering where we all sit on like a standard box truck.
I've also brought up the occurrence of the problem in Columbus where people were told that they would board horses for the track. And, they're running it as a business and when you get a, a truck and a trailer and 2,000-pound animals, you know, in the trailer, I don't know. I mean, it's not going to be, I don't think it'll be 20,000, but I'm not sure.
Oh, yeah.
It's not necessarily how much it, it's not necessarily how much it weighs, it's what it's licensed for. So, if a trailer says it's licensed for 14,000 pounds, it's 14,000 pounds. It doesn't matter if it's potentially full or not, that's what it's licensed for.
Okay.
So, I, I mean, if you got pulled over, they may cut you some slack because it doesn't weigh that much, but as a hypothetical, the weight is the weight and it's on the license for the vehicle itself.
And I think we're all in agreement that semi trucks are at a level that we would want to limit the number of deliveries of. What's a number for a semi truck?
What is a, so a fully...
A GVW?
A fully loaded semi truck, the max that they can weigh is 80,000.
80,000?
Unless they're special licensed, then I'm, I'm assuming they can go more than that, but...
But, that's the maximum that they can weigh.
But, they're also licensed to that maximum, so it'd be very easy to determine whether or not they're, whether they're carrying that much weight, whether they're licensed for that weight. Because it would be part of the truck's license.
So, I don't think we want to do 80,000 if that's the maximum they're licensed for, we would probably want to go down from that.
I'm just thinking, you know, Jim's sat through all of these conversations and you know what trucks weigh what. I mean, maybe you two can put your head together and come back with a recommendation. I mean, knowing what we're, is that we're trying to get at. You've got a much better idea of how much things weigh and what makes, what, what creates wear and tear on roads and things like that than, than we do. And then we can just react to it.
Okay. How do we feel about the time limitation on non-residential deliveries? Basically just saying you can't get deliveries on the weekend?
I mean, I think it's reasonable. I don't know that there's anything that would be, that would change it, that would make it easier.
And you're limiting this to deliveries that wouldn't be expected in a residential area on a weekend, correct?
Correct.
Yep. So, not all, any delivery that would normally be delivered on a residence is fine.
Yeah, I mean, I'm thinking, I'm thinking of if somebody is getting, if they do auto, if they do auto sales, for example, if they're getting a bed full of trucks or a bed full of cars to their house. That's something that's not generally expected in a residential district. You can't do it on Saturday and Sunday. Okay? So, let's talk about how we envision handling customers. This could be, I don't know how we feel about the current recommendation. Right now, the recommendation is to have not more than one customer visit at a time by appointment only, and then limiting the number that can occur in a day. Maybe generally, we can just have a conversation about customers to and from a home occupation two.
How do you, how would you manage, how would you monitor if they're making appointments or not?
Well...
I mean, do you got to look at their books or...
I would look at their website. I, I draw a lot of examples from a family member who runs a residential zone business in I C N T. And, if you want to order any of her products, you have to schedule a pickup time on her website. And, they have X number of pickup times every day, and that's when you can come and get your items and then you can leave. It's not like a general storefront where you can just go and buy things. You have to schedule an appointment to pick up your items that you've ordered online. So, if I had to, if I got a complaint coming in, I, I think that they're just having customers come and go willy-nilly, I would probably look at their website and see what an average person would do if they were going to buy some of their goods.
So, is the purpose to, like, have them come every, you know, not all at once or periodically during the day?
Yeah, it, it's, it's to handle parking, it's to handle traffic. And, with, I mean, the question too is also posed to the council as a policy matter, do you want to have a retail-type store in the residential district? And, I think, you know, the, a lot of the reasoning behind the appointments and customer visits is that there was some hesitation about just having a retail store operating in the residential district. So, we wanted to allow people to sell goods in a retail-type setting, and that's why we had come up with the appointment idea. Also to manage parking and traffic.
Jessica, this is Rob. Is that kind of how you're seeing it going now? Like, is, is there complaints driven by people coming and going from certain residences or...
Customer visits are not the majority of complaints. I think we've had a couple over the years. But, no, I would not say this has been a huge thing we've gotten feedback on.
Okay. Because I'm just thinking about like certain businesses in town here, whether they sell oil or something else, provide service. You usually are setting up an appointment, you're calling them, "Hey, I want to swing by after work, when I get off, pick this up." So, I don't know if that's common or, with other cities or...
Jessica, I think it's more the truck traffic we've gotten complaints from.
It's the traffic.
It's the truck traffic. They're...
Not the passenger vehicle.
It's not passenger vehicles, it's the truck traffic that comes up and down the road, especially a gravel road, creates dust. And, you know what I mean, and, and when they're do, you know, I mean, it's, it's traffic that you wouldn't normally see in a residential area. But, it's part of their business and they go up and down the road. And apparently, they go fast up and down.
And the dust flies.
So, that ends up getting, that ends up getting taken care of under the traffic control rather than the number of customer controls? Is that what I'm hearing?
My intent when drafting this was the trips per day was meant to be vehicles that are owned by the home occupation. So, the customer visits was actually in my mind, as I was formulating this, outside of the trips per day. So, you would actually, the way it was originally recommended, you'd get eight trips per day to and from the property for commercial vehicles. And then, you would also have eight customer visits. So, you could have eight appointment slots on the hour for an eight-hour day. Customers can come and go and you wouldn't have to worry about that impacting your allotted number of trips per day for home occupation two vehicles. Was the intention.
So, the traffic counts, you're, the traffic counts that you're talking about on page 11 of the slides is exclusive of customer visits. Is that right?
On the first bullet point, yes.
Yes.
And that's what the "by all vehicles associated with the home occupation two," that's the language that I was intended to convey that intention.
Are we now talking about the by appointment only, more than one customer at a time?
I'm happy to have any feedback from the council on any aspect of the last bullet point.
So, that, that particular thing I worry about because, again, I go back to the dog thing, where you know, someone drops the dog off. Maybe people, multiple people are picking their dogs up or dropping them off. The beautician who, you know, can have two people in there because somebody's hair takes, you know, so much time to dry and they can be doing somebody else's hair. I don't understand why we have this one customer at a time thing.
I agree. And I think, and kind of to my point from before, I think it's going to be hard to monitor. And, how would you even know the difference between your eight trips per day from the people that are working there and the customers? If they're all driving cars, it's the number of cars that are going in and out of the driveway. I can see the, being specific about the number of trucks because that's, that's a whole different story. But, the difference between the workers and the customers, if they're all driving cars, there shouldn't be, I mean, I think just a total of car traffic would be sufficient.
Okay, so, one idea is when we draft the trips per day language, to bring back to the council, draft it with customer visits in mind and drop the appointment requirement. Is there any other support for that idea?
I agree with that.
So, are we saying eight customers visits a day?
We're saying we're not going to care.
I'm sorry?
We're just saying we're not going to define it.
What we're going to do is come back with a recommendation on a total number of trips per day that would be allowed to and from the property by both customer vehicles and home occupation vehicles. And just kind of lump it all into one big trips to and from per day that are allowed.
Yep, that makes sense.
That, that meets an indiv, an invisible standard.
Right. Okay, I think we...
You're catching on, Elizabeth.
Well, you know, when you really think about it though, if, if you had 75 trips a day, that's not invisible to a neighborhood. It's not invisible to the neighborhood, it's not invisible to us. If it's a gravel road, road grader goes extra. I mean, you, when you really, at some point, you're going to have the breaking point because you're going to impact so many different things that you're no longer going to have a residential neighborhood. So, at some point, you have to say what's invisible, what's not.
And in virtually every land use case that, that arises in, in any court setting, trips per day is something that is always talked about.
Yeah.
And it's always in the context of where is it? Is it a local street, arterial? So, I think, again, you're, you're on a path to make sense.
Okay, I think we, I don't want to jinx it. Maybe we can get through this next slide before, in the next couple minutes. Permitting. For a home occupation one, there's no permit or registration requirement being recommended at this time. For a home occupation two, when we look at all of the bullet points that I have on this slide, most of this language was already in the ordinance and is kind of standard language. No expansion or intensification is permitted unless they're in conformance with city code. The IUP will be terminated if, you know, there are issues with compliance. The two items that are kind of policy choices are, first is the, the second bullet point, terms shall be in up to five years. And the question is really how we feel about the first renewal occurring after two years. I think that was just intended to make sure we are aware if a business is exceeding the requirements early on. We don't want to wait five years and then realize they're significantly out of compliance. We will also discuss, I think, when we get to the, I'm trying to, where did we, we do, did discuss annual inspections.
I do have a question.
They're there in the last, in the last bullet point too. So, we, yeah, sorry.
Just a quick question here, sorry Jessica, just because we're getting down to the bottom there. So, a term shall be five years with first renewal occurring after two. So, technically, would it be the first term would be two years and then five years after that?
Yeah, correct. Yep.
Or, it could be that, you know, there were some issues that popped up after two years and so you're going to give them another two years to kind of establish a track record. I mean, it was, it just that it wouldn't exceed five years.
Okay.
Yeah, there, there is the flexibility to do one, two, three, four, up to five years.
Yeah, I guess that'd be for like a five-year, you already got a three-year inspection in there at the end. So, you got three years.
Well, that's inspections every year, every year for the first three years. So, I kind of, I mean...
Yeah, that's pretty right at the top.
I kind of like Janet's suggestion of, if you make it five years and you're going to have a annual inspection, you would know after the first year and have something in the language of the IUP that says if you don't meet your inspection after the first year, then something's going to happen.
And Mr. Mayor and Council, that something is usually a hearing, either about revocation or further conditions. So, for due process, they always have to come back for a hearing.
Okay.
We've talked about, I mean, we've talked about this on and off. I mean, I don't think it's a bad idea with a brand-new business coming in with no established track record to say, "We're going to do this for two years and see how it goes." You know, maybe if it's an onerous kind of process or it's very expensive, maybe the reapplication fee is less than the initial fee. I mean, we can talk about that when you start talking about the fees, but I don't, I don't, you know, I wouldn't do that unless there was a problem that they kind of had to reestablish themselves or if they came in brand-new and we just didn't have any, and, and they had a potentially high-impact business. I think if you have a business that's very low-impact, maybe, maybe you don't, you know, you don't impose that two-year sort of trial period, if you want to call it that. You know, like the dog groomer situation I'm, I'm thinking about, you know, that, that might have been one that you could have done five years right off the bat and felt pretty comfortable about it with the number of people she had and, and where she had, you know, where she had the grooming setup and things like that. But, in general, I think the way you have it written is fine. One question I had was on the third bullet point where it talks about no expansion or to... One question I had was on the third bullet point where it talks about no expansion or intensification. Is it necessary to insert that it would require a new application if those if those were things that they were after? Or is that just an assumption? I mean, if they decided they wanted to expand or or diversify, I guess I would want to make it clear that that would require them, kind of like the CUP's reopening up the permit and going through a new process. I don't, and I don't see that language anyway. So I didn't know if that if it was implied or if we needed to make that clear.
Or if it's as part of the other section of of city code that addresses interim use permit process generally. Because remember, we're under the IUP process umbrella. So I guess I don't know if anybody else here knows that off the top of their head.
What is the question again?
If if a business were to expand or intensify, would that be something that would require them to come back for a new interim use permit?
Yes, it's very similar to what we do with conditional use permits on Lake Drive.
Yeah, and I would actually, even if it's in our IUP code, I wouldn't object to having it be here so that it's just not overlooked. I mean, that's one of the challenges with looking at our code is you have things kind of scattered about and they relate. But you might, if you're just a regular Joe, you're not going to know to look at all those different places.
So Mr. Mayor and Council, I'm going to repeat my drafter's rule number 101. If you can say it once, say it once because the the problem with saying it twice is it may be stated slightly differently or it might get amended or so it's a strong preference of drafting that you you define something once and you, you know, you can reference back to it.
That's the, then I would say, let's make sure we reference people to those sections so that they don't miss it. I mean, I've missed it when I've gone through doing my homework for these meetings, so, and I know better.
That's a reference back is preferred to restating it.
Okay.
And 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 I'm just going to say, I think Councilmember Bush had a slightly better way of saying the the idea here, Jessica, which is the first, the initial term is two years and then afterwards it's five years rather than saying, because not everybody might renew in two years. So it's expecting a renewal in two years. I think the first term is two years and thereafter for five year terms.
Okay. I'm looking at the clock and I think we should probably table this discussion and come back to this slide at our next meeting. Shelley, I've not forgotten that you want to talk about building space. So we will bring that right up at the next meeting right away. Beyond that, we have a few items to get through. I encourage the council to think about our prohibited business, what we want to do with that so that maybe we can come to the meeting with some ideas and try to get through that quickly. Otherwise, we will come back with some additional language on the traffic issue. And I will make the other edits that we discussed. Do we want to talk about calendar tonight, Elizabeth?
I don't think, I don't think, I don't think I'll be able to talk to calendar because I think we have to talk about what other things are in there and where to fit, where to fit it in.
Certainly.
In the, in the big picture.
Okay. Well, Mayor and Council, thank you.
Thank you.
It was a pleasure. We've been working really hard to get through this and we're just going to keep on trucking through and we're going to get it done. So thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
We'll move on to number 12, engineer report, Kevin.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. Just as far as a report on projects, we did have a preconstruction meeting last week for West Freeway Drive. And so that is, you should see lots of activity on that project starting next week. November 1st, they will be beginning the process of clearing trees. And then once the trees are cleared on the site, then they'll begin with the excavation and soil correction work. And our current schedule will probably be working well into December as long as the weather cooperates for them. And so the intent is to try to complete the soil correction work here in 2022 so that everything's ready to go for the rest of the work beginning in '23. So good news there. Next item I wanted to report on is the application that was submitted for the Highway Safety Improvement Program funding for the intersection of Lake Drive and Kettle River Drive. That application was submitted through the county or the county submitted that application. That got full funding. We got the full $2 million that we could get for that. That is.
My God.
Wow.
Wait, say that again? We got the whole $2 million?
Correct, yeah. So that's the maximum you can get through that program. But we were fully funded, fully funded, but it's not, the project isn't 100% funded, but we got as much as we could get. And so that's program year 2027. So we'll have to work with the county. Well, it's going to be a county project, obviously, but I know that in one of my conversations with the Assistant County Engineer, Jerry Ojé, they're also talking about doing an improvement on Lake Drive in general. So I don't know what their timeline is. They can advance, construct the intersection work and get funded reimbursed later when it, when the funding year comes around. So but anyways, I just wanted to report the good news there.
That's great news. Thank you.
Good work, Kevin. And Anoka County.
Right. So so good news to report there. So more to report as we begin those conversations about how that will progress. Just an update on the speed study. We initially had intended to bring that back for approval tonight. The report's not completely, completely completed, so we'll look to bring that back at the next council meeting. Next item was the request for the reduction in the letter of credit for St. Clair Lakes. We did receive another request. This is their fourth request. They still have their bituminous wearing course to put on the project next year. So we want to make sure that we retain at least 125% of that value. And so with that, we can recommend a reduction in the letter of credit of $39,080.82, which leaves us a balance sufficient for that 125% of the wear course.
I can make that motion. So I move to approve the St. Clair Lakes Letter of Credit Reduction, number four, in the amount of $39,080.82, leaving the remaining letter of credit amount of $54,180.
Rob, I'll second.
It's moved and seconded. Any other questions or discussion? I'll call the vote.
Shelley, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
Jesse, aye.
That concludes my report unless there's any other questions.
I have one question. What happened to our little tree?
So, yeah, we're working through that permitting process with the DNR. I think we have a plan that's agreeable to everybody. So we have to write a mitigation report for that permitting process, but but that is moving forward. And it, and we'll be able to, we have two trees. We'll be able to preserve one because it's kind of on the edge of the construction area. There's another tree that's that we have to take out and that's the one we have to mitigate. But I think we've got a process in place that we're going to move forward, so.
Very good. Thank you. Attorney's report.
Nothing further.
City Council members report, Shelley.
I have nothing. Nothing.
I have a couple of things. One of them is the Personnel Committee's report, which you have as a handout from tonight. And I'm going to find mine so I can direct you through it. It's three pages. The first one is a memo. The second two are spreadsheets. This has to do with medical insurance benefits for staff. So we we usually find ourselves in this position because open enrollment for medical doesn't align with our budgeting timeline. So we've gone through the process on the preliminary levy to set a preliminary budget for things like salaries and benefits and things like that. And you guys are all part of that process. What this memo outlines is how the city generally goes forth with providing the cafeteria plan for benefits eligible pay employees and that we are continuing to use the Public Employees Insurance Program as the vendor that provides those benefits to our employees. It's the same sort of blended rate that we've used since 2021. And we've talked about that in the past. I'm not going to take time to talk about that now. If you remember, in our preliminary levy, we set the amount for the medical insurance cafeteria plan at $143,000. That was set for 12 FTEs, which was an increase of two over 2022. And Elizabeth estimated the inflation rate at 8%. She was really darn close because it came in at 8.3%. So kudos to you for nailing that so close. So we have a final budget that we'd like you to approve. And what the goal is tonight is to get the council to approve using, or approve the application to use PEEP again. And then the second is to approve the amount that is being proposed here. So if you look at the next two sheets, I tried to provide the same kind of detail that you've seen in the past. I've given you a historical perspective of what these costs have done over time. And as you can imagine, they continue to go up and go up significantly. But they're definitely in line or even below what market is is showing in a lot of industries. I've given you the sort of historical trends since 2020. So if you want to just focus in on the 2023 part, as I mentioned, our levy was set at $143,000. The actual estimated budget cost is at $156,756. What's the difference between those two numbers? So remember, the levy is what we're going to charge taxpayers and businesses. The budget is what it's going to cost us. So as you know, there are employees that are having their benefits and their salaries paid through fees, like in our building department. There's also a portion of Lori's salary and benefits that go to the county recycling grant. So those numbers are backed, would need to be backed out of the budget number to get to the to the levy number. And if you do that, there's about a $936 difference between what was levied and what we actually need to come up with in terms of the budget. And that Elizabeth has the ability to move money around. So we don't need any direction from you to reallocate from any other pots of money. And within, she's also broken the expenses down within the departments. There's a few adjustments just interdepartmentally that she'll make now that she's got more specific numbers. But again, that does not need council approval. The last spreadsheet just shows you again some more detail. I know we always get asked like, how many FTEs and who's, you know, who's in what department? So I tried to provide that to you at the top. It gives you a sense of what the $2022 and $2023 came in for the family plan, how we do a blended average of that. And then it's a 60% coverage that we offer the employees. Excuse me. The numbers that are broken down by department are at the bottom. And again, as I mentioned, the difference between what was levied and what we actually have to come up with is less than $1,000. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, I can make the two required motions that we need to get this, get this going. And the reason we're doing this now is so that the the employees know what they can expect in terms of their benefits when they choose the program that they want to participate in. Otherwise, they'd be going blind with how much is going to be out of pocket for them. Any questions?
No, not for me.
So then I would move, the Personnel Committee would move to seek council approval of the group health application for the Public Employees Insurance Program? That's the first one?
This is Sue, I'll second.
Are there any discussions or questions? I'll call for the vote.
Shelley, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Jesse, aye.
And then the second would be that we're seeking council approval for the 2023 medical insurance cafeteria plan benefit. As presented in the spreadsheets, the tier one single coverage would be at $1,063 per month. And the tier two family coverage is at $1,370 per month with prorated amounts available for employees working 30 hours or more. And we will use the operating reserves to cover the difference. And that number is wrong. The 1376 is the difference between the levy and the and the budgeted amount. It's the nine, whatever I said, nine.
Is there a second?
936, that's the difference. And then there'll be a minor reallocation within budgets done to adjust the departmental budgets within the overall approved budget.
This is Sue, I'll second.
Any questions? I'll call for the vote.
Shelley, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Jesse, aye.
Okay, so that's number one. Number two is the Sunrise JPA. So I presented last time that we have finally gotten all of the members of the joint powers agreement together. We had a Zoom meeting last week, I think it was last week. I'd asked for input on the four scenarios for funding. I did not get any, so I went by what I thought was probably going to be most agreeable. Within each of those four communities, we actually narrowed it down to two more, two out of the four that we're going to go with and a couple of sub variants within that. We need to get back to Jamie at Sunrise by November 21st with what our answer is. So my question to you and Elizabeth is, I can certainly email these things out. We can put it on an agenda for a workshop. We can just email it out and you can tell me what you think. I don't care how we do it. I just want to get your input so that I can get it back to him by November 21st. I don't think it's going to take very much time. So if there's room on our next workshop, we could certainly squeeze it in there and send it out in advance so that it's really just a matter of answering questions. But I don't know how tight the agenda is.
We can, we can put it on the November 1st agenda. It won't take that long. There's only three options. There's.
Two options.
Two options, one with A and B. I think it's very straightforward. I think we can do that at the workshop, which would be.
Next week.
Next Tuesday.
Yep.
So in the meantime, we'll send you out the documents. You can look at them in advance. And if you guys have any questions on them, just give me a, give me a call or send me an email or whatever. I'm happy to clarify anything without pushing towards any one over the other. I think it's pretty self-explanatory, though. And lastly, I have an update. So Elizabeth and I have been working on the age-friendly community grant process, the one that we got tipped off on by the Met Council. And we submitted our first grant application last Friday. It's for a technical, technical assistance to write a larger community grant. So we were asking for $24,000, a little over $24,000, beginning in FY '23 to help us write the grant, do some marketing, do some focus groups on what kind of activities and services they would actually like us to provide. And if we get that, that would help us write the bigger grant that would go for funding those those programs. Elizabeth can provide you a copy of what we submitted if you're interested. We will be hearing on this very soon. I think the deadline for hearing back is November 7th. So we'll know shortly. Hopefully, we'll do as well as Kevin in Anoka County did. Maybe we're, maybe we're on a roll. But that's great because if we can do this, and this is the first step towards being able to provide some of the services that we hear our seniors wanting us to to do as a city. So that's it.
Rob, anything? I just want to report, I attended on October 15th, the the fire board or the fire department held an open house. It was a great turnout by the public. They had scheduled that the helicopter would be coming. That that ended up getting canceled. There was some miscommunication there. But they did get to display their tools at work, which was very cool. They used the jaws of life, used a new tool I learned about to cut windshield out. There's a, like a tin snip that can cut right across your windshield. And they cut the posts. They they had the roof off within, it was within five minutes. And they were explaining the whole time the process and things and things that they're up against currently, whether it be airbags, talking about 10,000 PSI, what that looks like if they were to cut through that and how they need to do this properly and all that. So it was a good experience and it was a big turnout by the public. M Health had an ambulance there. They were doing blood pressure checks and things like that just to be familiar with the community and get out to know them. And then, yeah, that'd be all I have to report.
Jim, Public Works.
Mr. Mayor and Council, we've had a couple of.
Mr. Mayor and Council, we've had a couple of road complaints for speed. So one of them was on Broadway and Kettle River, speed coming in and out of the roundabout. So we worked with Anoka County Sheriff's Department, and we have their speed sign out there. It is not displaying speed at the moment. We are just collecting data. So the, so the plan that we're working on is collecting data for one week on traffic going eastbound, so coming from west, going into the roundabout. And then, after a week of that data, then we will collect on the westbound side again, traffic going westbound to, just to kind of see what their speeds are. And then when we're done with that, we're going to move it over to Howard Lake because we've had some complaints over there. So we'll do the same, same type of scenario there, speed going eastbound for a week and speed going westbound for a week, not displaying, just collecting data. Once I get all that information, I'll, I'll more than likely give it to Kevin to try to put into some sort of readable report, and then I'll present that when we get it. That's all I have.
Public Communications Coordinator report. No report from me tonight, Mr. Mayor.
I just want to say, I got my postcard in the mail for the Rice Creek. Very well done.
I did, too.
Very eye-catching. I, it was like perfect. Thank you for doing that.
Very nice.
Assistant Administrators report.
I have no report.
Nothing left?
Nothing left.
All right. City Administrators report.
No report this evening.
All right. All right, then we're going to close this meeting.